While listening to order the Thompson Select Board. It is October 2nd, 2025, and we're in the Donald A. Russell Meeting Room. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to use this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This is all the Caldwell.
Matt Dixon.
Spectator.
Ian Tallahan.
Present.
Marie Brilliant.
Here.
Ryan Holmes.
Here.
And Roland Tups.
Yeah.
Next up, Tom Energy's report.
Early voting starts on October 6th here in the Donald A. Russell Meeting Room. On the ballot are two Select Board seats, one MSAD 75 Order Director seat, the four Union Park Tax Increment Financing District, and a non-binding referendum on whether the town wants to allow the sale of adult-use recreational cannabis, and if so, whether the town would want to limit the number of licenses to two. It should be noted that the four Union Park TIP is broken into two ballot questions. The first would approve the new affordable housing TIP, and the second removes the property from the TIP that it's currently in because the property can't be in two TIPS. In order for the new TIP to be approved by the state, the vote on both questions must be yes. If no votes are greater than yes votes on either question, the new TIP will not be approved. And finally, beginning with COVID, the town's Halloween parade was suspended, and festivities consisted of a trunk-or-treat at the Thompson Fairgrounds. This year, the town will go back to the Halloween costume parade and trick-or-treating at the Thompson Fair Mall. To show off your costume and participate in the parade, please arrive in the area of Panera by 4:15 PM on Friday, October 31st. The parade kicks off at 4:30 PM. Thompson Fair Mall merchants will offer trick-or-treating. If anyone is interested in giving out candy as people used to do and when they sign up for the trunk-or-treat at the Thompson Fair. The Thompson Fair Mall has extended an invitation to participate. Please contact our Recreation Department to sign up to get a candy distribution table. Thanks to John Larson and the Thompson Fair Mall for working with us this year, and thank you to the Thompson Fair for working with us on trunk-or-treat the past few years. That's all I have.
Great, thanks. Next up, Boarding Community Reports and Updates. We have none tonight. Public comment? Any? Correspondents, anyone receive anything? No? Adjustments to the agenda, we have none. Okay, on to the consent calendar. Approval of minutes of the regular Select Board meeting held September 18th, 2025. Motion. Moved in second and all in favor. Right, next up, I'm going to request. All right. Two, approval to open the polls, excuse me, at a made-in on November 4th, 2025, for the state-of-main referendum election and municipal annual election, open and processed absentee ballots on the following day if needed, Friday, October 31st. Beginning at 10 AM and ending at 4 PM or sooner if completed. Appointing to Dumont as Warden for the state election. Appoint Steve Littlefield as the Moderator for the municipal election. Approve for the registrar to hold extended hours till 7 PM on October 30th, 2025 for the purpose of voter registration and absentee voting.
Subsumed.
Moved in second and all in favor. All right, next up, a public hearing. 2584. Public hearing on the signing of the warrant in a municipal town meeting being held on November 4th, 2025.
So the warrant that you will be taking your public hearing on has a number of articles. The first is to elect the moderator. The second is to have the election for the Select Board seats as well as the MSAD 75 seat. Then there is a question related to the Union Park TIP. This one would establish the new affordable housing TIP if it's passed. Then there is a question to take the property that would be in the new TIP out of the old TIP. And then the final question is the non-binding referendum regarding adult recreational-use cannabis, asking people if they support it, and then if they do support it, whether they want to limit the number of places that it could be used at too. So that sets the stage for your public hearing.
All right. Your public hearing is open. We'll entertain any comments for the audience. Must not be here for this agenda item. Anything online? Okay. Cool. Close public hearing. We will.
I would suggest a motion to authorize the warrant.
I made motion to authorize a warrant for the municipal annual town meeting on November 4th, 2025.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor. Okay, we're ready to go with that then.
And then collect your signatures for your lead pick.
Awesome. All right, next item, 2585. Consideration, any appropriate action on the community center report and to approve a new charge.
In tight, we're going to have the Community Center Committee.
Yeah. We're not open.
Who's speaking first? Can we see this so we can see the screen?
Yes.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am Allison Carey-Play. I am here on behalf of the Thompson Community Center Committee. And I'm here, I'm secretary, and I'm here with Steve Kessler, co-chair of the committee. We're here to give you an update on the activities of the committee over the last year. First, we just wanted to share with you again our mission statement. I won't read it again because we seem to read it every time, but just know that this is the backbone of everything that we do within the committee. And as we review things to make decisions, this is what we use as our cornerstone. So we have a number of different sheets that we just kind of want to review with you, the things that we've done over the past year. And one of the key things that was brought to our attention is we want to be able to promote awareness within the town of what we're actually doing. So with a strong recommendation, we created a fact sheet with some timeline details that is on the webpage for the Town of Thompson. We created postcards that we could hand out among our activities that would drive residents to get the most up-to-date information. We had a table set up at this annual town meeting this year to be able to hand out and answer questions of Thompson town residents. And we have had a couple of times record articles that kind of talk about what we've been doing as a committee and just to make sure that residents are aware of our activities. Just to kind of recap, so for Phase 1, the Thompson residents participated in a couple of surveys. The results from those surveys indicated that more than 70% of those surveyed desired some form of community center, and with that understanding that there would be some associated cost with it. So then in Phase 2, we identified some recommended locations, designed a better understanding of what cost estimates could be. And then our goal in the next phase is to really balance the community center desires of Thompson residents while still remaining fiscally responsible to the community members. As a review, this was our previous charge from September 4th of last year. One was to work with town management to investigate potential land locations. Two was to work with the town in Harriman to initiate a next phase of their contract for building a conceptual design. Three was to assist in drafting ideas for funding opportunities, including potential local partnerships, community outreach, and other projects. And four was to review these other local community centers to gain a better insight into the overall operating cost, fundraising, recommended management of the facilities. So with that, I'll hand it over to Steve to talk about the potential land usage.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
That, the slide previous to this with the old charge.
Yes.
On the report that I'm looking at online, that I thought was going to be the one today, that has committee recommendations at the end as that being a new charge, but it's the same as the old one.
That might have been an oversight on our part that the old slide was left in. This was just a slide to recap the old.
Am I reading that wrong though?
I think probably Allison said it was oversight, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm reading it wrong because when we make a motion tonight, we're going to make sure we highlight all of the details.
Once they're all done, I'll give you some options for your motions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, I think I cut the glasses too much also.
Yeah, I know.
Go back.
Yeah.
Potential land locations, this was a lot of fun. We worked really hard with the town to come up with a bunch of options, and we narrowed it down to two possible locations. These locations were used in our charrette that I'll talk about in a couple of slides. Two locations that we came up with were on Forside Road, where the current ballfields are, but also they're up on the upper tier of Forside in the woods, and that would be transformed into a wonderful community center. The second option is on the fairgrounds along the bypass, 196. If you were on 196 looking towards the football field, it would be in that location right there. Could give you guys a moment to look at these numbers, but I think you follow that. They both have similar lot sizes. What it came down to, the two options essentially were the utilities, use of utilities and the ability to access those utilities. Mark can speak a little bit to that. All the town charrette. We invited people, advertised it, community members, a couple of different methods, and we went over the preferred items that were kind of consistent. Came along the charrette, it came to the competition pool and the walking track were still in the top of the wants of the town. We used blocks on site maps to help design buildings. So we broke out into groups. I think it was five groups, and we each kind of designed our own building. The attendance was relatively low, but the feedback was really supportive, and it was a really strong engagement from those that attended. Now it's time to look at, consider funding opportunities where we began gathering data. A lot of the committee members with the lead of Lynn Saroy reached out to gather this information. We conducted meetings with potential fundraising volunteers. We met with capital campaign consultants for input and a potential timeline. And we met with other local organizations that could support and/or partner with us with a complete facility and programming within that facility. We also spent a lot of time visiting many different community centers throughout the state, from Waterville down to South Portland. A lot of the most important parts that people seemed to enjoy the most were the elevated walking tracks. The pools definitely drew the most attendance and sort of a return on investment for both local and non-residents. Multipurpose rooms were used widely and good opportunities for rentals and community events. And kitchens happened to be really popular as well. And here we are, this is Allison.
Right. So we did want to be able to present some numbers as what an operating cost might be. But some of the community centers that we talked with, we didn't have a whole lot of success getting that information from them, so we used AI and put in some very generic information and talked about the square footage of the building we would potentially be looking at and some other contributing factors based on the size of the town. And we did come up with a draft idea of what an operating budget would be. Then when we met with some of our other community center committees, we asked for their feedback in some other locations. We also met with the town manager, and we got that feedback as well. And we kind of came up with a draft that we could share with you guys that we gave some indication of what a community center of this size would look like. And we included that as appendix E in the thing. We do want to call out, we recognize pools increase expenses, but they also drive higher membership rates and attendance, including visitors. Our expectation is for program fees, things like yoga and things like that. Any cost would be associated with the program expense. And partnerships can help with revenue generation and cost savings. So those are some of the key metrics that we took away from our operating budget analysis. So at the end of the day, we wanted to give you what our location recommendation would be. So of the two, we do think that the fairgrounds is a better location. Provides easy access for students from multiple towns, schools, islands, community, and many other residents with existing and potential walking tracks. It's a limited encroachment on neighboring homes. It's a potential connection point for current and future walking trails and parking for those trails. The facility needs to be a multipurpose facility. Building near existing rec fields could be seen as a sports complex. And building near the bypass will have a greater visibility for use. Our design recommendation, we did a lot of time with this, a lot of back and forth with our friend Mark Lee. And we basically came up with, our recommendation would be a two-story building with a pool and an elevated walking track. It allows space for growth. The elevated walking track features, we were recommended by a number of different community centers. This is the way to go if you're going to do a walking track. It's the most requested feature in the survey results. It has increased safety for all generations. There are some safety concerns when the walking track is on the same level as the multi-use area. Less daily and ongoing maintenance as it's a further walk to get to the actual use of. No interference with other gym functions. And the key points that we listed above outweighed the minimal building costs to put it as a second-story track. With that, I will hand it over to Mark Lee to talk about the conceptual design. Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Mark Lee, and I'm an architect with Harriman. And I've had the pleasure of working with the committee for a very part of probably about 18 months or so in developing first assistance with this survey. But then through this next phase, taking the notional idea of what the community was asking for in a community center and starting to put something that's a little more concrete, that we can understand what the, how big it is, where it might be located, and what its actual construction cost might be. So that's what we've been working on as a committee for a period of time here and what was number two, I think Allison identified in the charge of the committee.
And as Steve pointed out, the, and Allison, the sites, we looked at two sites. The site diagram in front of you is the Fairground site. And it's a parcel that's somewhat remote from community drive in that there's a portion of land that's owned by the fairgrounds that we would have to access across that getting to the parcel. But it has, it's fairly flat and easily buildable, and it has a great opportunity for the current planned program as well as for expansion. It could have great visibility from the bypass. And as also was mentioned, a great deal of connectivity with both current connectivity with the trails in the community, but also potentially future with the rail trail that's identified. So just a little bit about how, you can see the red outline is the property boundary of this parcel. It's actually, it's cut off a little bit. You can see that there's a stream and some severe grading down the southern portion of the lot. We're staying away from that. So right now, the gray block that's identified as E is where the proposed community center would be located. Its entrance would be on the northern side. You can see a little yellow arrow that points to where the primary entrance would be. But there's enough room to get both a drive, an access drive, as well as sidewalk along the edge of the football field without disturbing. You can see, I think there's the press box in the satellite photo. But that can go along the edge of the northern edge of that boundary and get access into the site, provide fair, an adequate amount of parking. We're showing 140 spaces. Which would be adequate for a community center of this size. And that's identified that parking area with the D designation. And as I mentioned, if you were going to expand, there's plenty of opportunity both to expand the facility and parking and potentially recreation fields or other amenities on the site. But we're utilizing a little less than half of the site. That's what was, that's showing proposals here. A little bit about how we've organized all the components that are being desired in the community center. So the survey and the community forum or charrette that we had identified a number of amenities. And it really kind of fall into probably three primary buckets. One-third is the gymnasium, which is a multi-court gymnasium that can be used for all types of court sports and has spectator seating. And that's identified with the letter D on the diagram. The other, the next third approximately is the pool. If it's desired to go over the pool, and there's already discussion about, strong desire identified for the pool, that should be with the letter F on that side. And what we try to do with an efficient design like this is identify ways to serve both pool and the gym areas as well as the rest of the facility with common locker rooms and toilet rooms in the middle of all of that. And that's designated with the letter E. And then the remaining thirds are split on two levels. And that's a lot of the fitness studios and multipurpose rooms. And on this level, it's identified with C, which would be a divisible multipurpose space. And a lot of what we heard in the surveys was the ability to support functions for a whole range of uses and diversity of community members and generations. And so having a very flexible multipurpose space like that allows for that use. We're also showing a small kitchen that was identified also as an amenity in some of the other community centers that the community visited that adds a lot of flexibility, both as a small, little cafe, which is a nice opportunity for people to socialize neat, but also provides opportunity for concessions and also food as part of a function in the multipurpose space as well. And then lastly, in the diagram here is the entrance lobby. And so that's A, that's the sort of the edge of a building that you come into. And you can see sort of everything kind of pinwheels off of that A. So that really is that central point that everyone gathers. We did look at a one-story versus a two-story, and the two-story requires that we have stairs and an elevator. So that was one of the aspects that sort of we discussed. We're going to add some cost to it, but it does allow the walking track to be elevated. So gymnasium, the large volume, and so there's enough volume to have a walking track on the upper level without restricting the use of the gym. But getting up to that level requires that we have appropriate amount of Egress in the event of an emergency. And so we have multiple stairs and also accessibility. We have an elevator in the building for that. The upper level just has the, because the pool and the gym are tall volumes, there's no second story to those other than you can see the walking track outlined around the gym identified with a J. So that goes all the way around. And there's even space on the side of the walking track for support activities as part of that area. And then we have above that multipurpose space on the lower level, we have fitness studios that are also multipurpose and can be divided as well as the administrative offices. And so that's identified with the H and the I. And then the G is the upper lobby. And we see that also as an opportunity to have areas for folks to have activities, whether it's informal socializing or it could even be other more formal activities on the upper level of that lobby space. So that's sort of the organization of those different components, and they're all to scale now. So we can then start to say, okay, well, now that we have a scale plan that identifies all the needs. And as we mentioned, I think Allison mentioned, we spent a lot of time as a group going back and forth from how can we make this more efficient? How can we make all these spaces as multifunctional as possible so that you're not duplicating space in the building? Because it's an investment that you want to make sure you do well. The other aspect was just to start to think about, well, what does that volume of space look like? And how does it relate to town facilities? And so we wanted it not to feel like a bunch of big boxes. We wanted the building to feel like it had a relationship with some of the other town facilities, whether the building we're in or the fire station or some of these more civic buildings. And so a pitch group was an important part to have in it. And so then we have, and brick. And so we've kind of combined some of those elements in this right here. This also shows a view towards the entrance. And so that's a, oftentimes, we'll try to have some transparent entrance so that you can start to see the activity, and you know exactly as you're approaching the building where the front door is, or you can see a sign or anything that identifies that. But in this picture, that lobby is on the front. The pool volume that we're showing in the plan diagram is to the left. And then the gym volume is sort of behind the lobby right here. The multipurpose fitness and the administrative offices are right on the front on the right-hand side of that section for volume. This diagram is a good depiction of kind of the scale of it as it would sit on the site. So you can see the bypass on the left-hand side of the photo here. And then what you can't see is sort of the football field is just off to the right of the photo here. But it gives you a good sense of kind of how this would be nestled into the site, the potential to leave. As I mentioned earlier, you still have about half the site that could potentially be undeveloped and then could provide you opportunities for future growth as well. So these are the culmination of saying, okay, all these ideas that we've had about what this might be, this gives us something more tangible to say, this is what it would look like. And so, and it also, as I mentioned, provides us to tell the community to say, okay, what would the cost of constructing that be in today's construction dollars as we understand them? So the first element we look at is the site cost, and that's about $2.7 million. And that is to essentially prepare the area for the building itself as well as the drives to come into that site. And then the utilities, we've got to get power and water and sewer into that location itself. So that is all contained in that site development cost. The next is the, I'll call it the base building. So it's the building itself with the, and we look at the potential that the pool could be, the pool portion of that on the right, on the left-hand side of the image could be built at the time that the reservation is. Or if you wanted to, you could always sever that portion off. But, so the base building is the gymnasium and then the multipurpose rooms, the fitness rooms, the locker rooms, and the offices. And so that portion is $12,000, $12.5 million for the base building construction. And then just under $7 million for the pool itself. So if you add all that up, as we're showing that the building concept, it's about $22.1 million for the construction piece. And so we always want to make sure that people understand there's more to a construction or to a project cost than just what you pay the contractor to build. And so there's costs to actually design it, to permit it. There's costs for furniture and the fixtures and equipment in it. And so all of that also adds up to approximately 25% of the total construction cost. And so once you add on those administrative project costs, sometimes we refer to as SAW costs, that's another $5.5 million. And so in $20.25, a project of this scale was about $27.6 million, which is in line with what we're seeing for community center. That's approximately the, you know, 28,000 to 30,000 square feet. So that's, that gives you a good understanding of all these things that we've been talking about. With that, Allison?
All right, back to me. And I'll have to look if there is the two slides. But basically, knowing all of that information that we've shared with you so far, we recognize that that's an awful lot of money to consider. So we want to make sure we're balancing it, as we said at the beginning, and being fiscally responsible with the town. So our recommendation is to develop and release an RFP to further design the building. The next phase, to our understanding, would be a schematic design. And while that's happening, the committee would manage some fundraising-associated activities, meaning potentially having some volunteers to look at what kind of fundraising could we actually do? What kind of fundraising could we secure? What kind of fundraising could we secure? If we worked with a capital manager, what could we do in this time span? And the committee would also continue to engage with community members for feedback regarding this potential project. And the town would coordinate efforts to finalize the agreement with the fairgrounds for access. If these were to be approved, we would be looking for eighteen months to accomplish the above. And that is our thought. So now we will open it up to questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
What is your fundraising goal? There was no number.
We don't have a specific goal right now because we wanted to make sure that we had an appropriated idea of what the select board would be looking for and had some proper guidance before we actually refute anybody about our action fundraising goal. So we want to have approval on it before we actually started talking.
So the capital campaign consultant will be involved, do you have a price for that person?
Yeah, it's one of the appendixes. She gave us a a rough estimate based on a town of this size and and roughly the type of building we'd be looking to build. So she gave us an appendix item that we shared with.
I missed that, so what is that number?
Nope, nope. Then let it burn. We'll get it to burn.
Okay, it was.
We have those slides in there and then we took one out.
To the thirty thousand dollar rate. But but keep in mind too, she said that, you know, depending on what our numbers come in at and what we would set for goals, she is more than willing to work with us. So that number can be very fluid. The more you're gonna ask for the duty, the more it will cost. So if we can do a minimum amount of work with her. Big thing is is just that guidance and those twenty years of expertise that she has, so.
Okay, my second question is, looking at lower level C, would that be like public meeting space? And is it divisible? Is that going to be divided? Because when I, when I look at this picture, it looks like a really great athletic center, but I don't see it so much as a community center because it's all athletics. And for those of us who are allergic to exercise, what are what are we going to be able to do there? We can have meetings, book clubs, I mean, if we can use that space.
So I'll start and then I'll let Mark the job in. We wanted to make sure that the D and F are definitely fitness related. C is a multipurpose room. That's where you're gonna have your general activities. That's where the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts can meet. That's where you can have, you know, senior activities, things of that nature. The other thing is for both the lobby A and B, we're picturing it as having a lot of chairs. So people can come in and and play cricket with each other and things of that nature. So you can both lower level C, which is a multipurpose room that can be split off, kind of like the large multipurpose room at St. John's with a kitchen attached, could be rented out, but could be used for multitude of activities. But we also have that kind of meeting space in A and then the upper one.
You did, not much I can add, you did a great job. The only other thing, you asked if it was viable, you don't want to see a dash line directly.
I did see that dash line.
And so that allows us to create really two rooms, two smaller rooms, or open it up for a larger one, which is great. We have storage adjacent to it, which is really, really important if you want to use it for a lot of different things, so that different organizations can store their stuff there and take it out and put it away without a challenge with that. It's also great having an extra kitchen so they can be used in conjunction with food. And as Alison said, the lobby A and then also the upper lobby in G are intended to have space for people to do activities as well. So so we thought it was really, really important, that first area that you walk into and and the most immediate spaces really aren't necessarily all just about fitness. They're really about other community functions.
Well, that's good to hear, I just wondered the answer to that, you know. I have two more questions, I'm making it going, you guys want to turn?
Yeah, well, I have some too, but you can finish.
I noticed that you put down costs for lifeguards, maintenance custodial, front desk admin, but you didn't say how many employees that was, like what are the salary ranges for some of these positions?
I will attempt it. So again, we took it based off of the AI-generated budget. And then, you know, off the top of your head, how many?
I thought I kept it in spreadsheet for some of them, I may never move it for this version. We did speak as a small group, it's the example.
Yeah, I'm on the wrong one.
I know the front desk and admin were consisted of, as we were one full-time and multiple. Uh, the custodian, I believe, was again, we had one full-time, but then based on a conversation with other separation center.
Oh, yeah.
Centers, um, they they suggested because of the pool, you will definitely need more than one full-time custodian. So we bumped that up to like basically one and a half full-time employees. Oh, I guess front desk, we had two full-time, which are time.
Yeah, so the two FTEs is two full-time employees with benefits for the front desk and admin.
And the lifeguard specifically, I don't think we have a specific amount of lifeguards, but we talked about how many lifeguards were going to be needed to cover the pool. Like the, we need, I believe it's like one per twenty, one lifeguard for twenty-five supporters. So and at all times, you needed two. So based on those calculations, we came up with, and and then the hourly rate at which that would be charged. So the lifeguards were not salary position, we based about about hours needed.
We got that information from talking with the line suit.
Yeah, okay. And my last question is, with regard to the pool, are you planning to check with the local hospital to see if they want to use our pool for a therapy pool in certain hours? So that that would be income because the hospital would be paying for that? Tell me what your research shows.
We we have had that on our radar as a fundraising opportunity, a fundraising reach out. We have a whole list of potential businesses in the area that we would want to talk to on a variety of different levels. But again, we don't really want to start any fundraising until we have approval to do so. So yes, that's definitely a thing that we would like to be able to reach out. And that would be what we would consider part of our phase three work.
And that, excuse me, that is also why we incorporated therapeutic pool as well as the competition pool. So you sort of shrunk the competition pool down a bit from a larger size and added a therapeutic pool.
So my initial thought is, if we can, you know, use it for things like swim lessons for kids, it's really hard to find those right now. That would be really good too, so assuming that kind of thing can be incorporated.
Yes, I think the design that we looked at was you kind of weighed your way into the pool so you can use wheelchairs as well, accessible for the overall.
You can roll right into it.
Apparently.
Yeah, it's what they call a zero entry. So it's just like when you're on feet walking into the ocean. It literally starts at like, you know, an inch of water and then it gets deeper as you go down.
Thank you, I have no more questions.
Thank you for coming tonight, this has been, it's been pretty good. I don't know, I didn't see that, I'm looking on your webpage at the road before.
The one that we download is not the correct one, it's it's a different one, that's why.
Got it. One of the, I like the fairgrounds place. One of the questions that I have moving forward is I think that's probably, well, if that's the place that we're going to do it, we really need to talk with the fairgrounds sooner rather than later to figure out if that's even a viable option for us.
If you want to take a minute, I'll kind of go through my thought of it, or you could proceed if you want.
Let's do it.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, yeah.
So my, if you wish to proceed, there's a number of things we'd need to do at once. One is if you you've identified is we have now, most of you I think know, but we have gotten the permission from the state that it could be used for a community center. For those of you that aren't aware, when this land was first given to the town, it had a restriction in it that it'd be used for a rest stop or picnic area. And if we ever did something other than that, the state would take the land back. So we got a deed from the governor about a month ago where she removed that restriction. So it could be used for a community center at this point. We had a meeting with the fair board of directors about two months ago. And they're basically, they haven't committed to anything yet, but they're willing to keep talking. They said it would be important to them if they were willing to work with us, that they'd like to see the road between the football field and the border of their property so that the traffic that was coming into the community center wouldn't be going through the main fairgrounds. So that's important to them. We offered to them, we said, you know, if you want, we can try to work in a way that we could make this facility available to you during fair season or the parking lot or something. And so that that's discussion we need to come up a little more. But the sense that I got that night is that their preference would be probably to have it as far away as possible from the fair itself so that the traffic isn't mixing. And Mark respected that and the the designs that he did. So certainly one thing to be done would be to go to the fairgrounds and try to work out an agreement. It's worth going to them, even if the community center didn't proceed, it's still worth us trying to get an agreement with fairgrounds to access that property. Because if this recreational rail trail ends up happening, Topson's gonna need a place to access it from and a place where you could park or something. This, so even if this didn't have a building on it, a parking lot, they would make that useful. So I think it's worth talking to the fairgrounds for many reasons. So certainly one step is to try to finalize that. If we can get that access, something that needs to be going on next would be, and I'll let Mark give more details in a minute, exactly what this entails, but he calls it a schematic design. So it's the next step of going for conceptual to actually start to figure out more details, nails the cost down better and figures out exactly what would be there and things, takes into account the site. So with that in mind, while the community center has said, committee, that one of the next steps that they would like is to work on this RFP, to have this schematic design, we wouldn't actually have the architect start on that schematic design until we knew we had permission from the fairgrounds. If the fairgrounds says, you know, we we really don't want to do this, then we would be working for the upper, in the foreside field site, so. The other thing that the thought is, is and the reason for the eighteen months and the question you had was, how much money are you gonna fundraise? As much as we can. So the thought is during that eighteen-month period, this A fundraising consultant be retained to work with the committee because it's a pretty good chance that bake sales aren't gonna pay for the cost of this. So it's gonna need a lot more than kind of just, you know, there's a role for events that get a lot of people involved and excited, but it's also gonna need someone that's skilled to help work on bigger donations and things. You might ask, where does the money come from for either the fundraising consultant or the schematic design? In our, you may recall that when we did the budget for this year that was passed at town meeting, we had eight hundred thousand dollars for capital items that could be used, among others. We said there isn't enough for all these things, but it could be used for any of these things at the pleasure of the select board, one of which was for the development and design of the community center. So the money to pay for an architect, and this would need to go to RFP again because it's gonna be a large amount of money. Again, I let Mark address, but probably in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand, maybe more, would be the schematic design. So the thought is that would go up for RFP and see what we get for responses. It would be vetted by the community center committee and they come back to you again, you know, in January or whenever these come back. And you guys would at that point decide the actual, give approval to that. So if you say tonight, committee, here's your charge, you're not saying tonight, it's not your last bite of the apple, I guess I'm saying. So once the RFP results come back, if they come back a million dollars, you may say, oh, okay, maybe we're not doing that right now. But I think on the other hand, the fundraising isn't gonna have a shot at working if the community isn't proceeding with a schematic design because who's gonna give money to something they think isn't gonna happen? We have talked to the town attorney and he has said that we could set up a fund that be conditional donations. So we could say any donation over X amount and whatever it might be, whatever you said, actually. Maybe it's a thousand dollars or something. So if you give more than a thousand dollars and the community center doesn't proceed, you get it back. So that, or maybe we just collect pledges is another option too or something. But there should be, during the eighteen-month period, an effort and the committee is willing to do that and perhaps supplemented by other volunteers. The reason why I say that is I get asked to to go to the, I called the original Highlands, but the Highlands on Elm Street a couple of weeks ago for a volunteer fair. They also had us come speak there back in June. They are really excited about this, to the point that it was hinted that the company that runs it might be willing to contribute something. Now, what something is or how much, that hasn't been developed. But there's already a member of their group that has volunteered to join and help with fundraising for soliciting people there and making connections. The advantage of this eighteen-month period is it gives a chance to the community to say, okay, if you want this, show me how you're gonna pay for it. I think no one, including the committee, thinks that this can all be done on the burden of the taxpayers and it can't all be in a bond. But let's say it goes on over the eighteen months and committee can, the capital campaign comes up with four to five million dollars. Then meanwhile, other things we can be working on is Brunswick's tried to get some of their funding through their mark center, through what's called correct earmarks or congressionally directed spending. With Senator Collins as the chair of the appropriations committee, there's probably no better, you know, obviously the mood's different in Washington spending money than it was a year ago. But with Senator Collins, that we probably have our best shot ever at getting an earmark. We can work on something like that. The state has been loosening up on the requirements, what you can use TIF money for. They, for instance, a couple of years ago, you couldn't use it for a town hall. They've made that now so that you can pay for a portion of a town hall with TIF money. We could go to the legislator, you know, if you told me you wanted me to, I'd work with people to try to lobby to get the TIF statute loosened up. They're, they like to make sure the TIF money is used for economic development, but I don't think it's a hard sell to say that this community center is economic development for Topson. It makes it a more complete community, it makes our residents happier, it makes it a better place to bring your business or find your employees. And I could go on, but I I think there's an argument to be made, I talked to Matt Eddie. Matt is willing to help do all he can with that. Talked to the chair of the MRA, who used to work for the state writing the TIF stuff. He's willing to help with some of the language on that. So if that language got passed and then if some of the things, let's say that things move forward with the redevelopment of the property or when someone comes to us and says they'd like to have a TIF, we say, okay, here's what we want to use the town share for, if we can get these changes. So that's another way to take it, get new new money to pay for it as opposed to pushing on the backs of the current taxpayers. So with this eighteen-month period that's asked for, gives us a chance to run all these things out and see what we can come up with. If we raise no money, we can't get the TIF statute changed, we don't succeed in the congressionally directed spending, then at the end of the period, you know, and you guys sort of have a chance to say, you know what? It's a great idea, but we don't think the numbers are gonna work because everyone's mindful of the taxpayers. So I think it, but I think it's important if you decide you want to proceed with this, like if you just said, just go see how much money you can raise, but we're not gonna continue with the design at all. I think it's gonna be a hard sell because people are gonna question how committed the town is. Because we aren't gonna get this building free on any scale. And there is gonna have to be a bond of some sort. But the trick is to try to find a manageable bond, a way to do it. We've got some TIFs that are expiring in the next couple of years, which means we're gonna be getting more tax revenue that we didn't have before. So there could be ways to smooth this out and especially if we can do significant fundraising, that it really isn't that big a hit. So this is a chance, if you choose to proceed on this next eighteen months. So if you ask the committee to develop an RFP, they would put it out and then they do vetting and bring it back to you in the future. And you'd again decide if you want to actually spend it. The committee can also work to either through RFP or just their current interviews to come up with a capital campaign person that can be paid for from our Topson Community Fund. We have enough money based on the numbers that have been said in that. And one of the purposes of that is this can be used for is for consultants to assist with recreation or capital things for recreation. And then we already talked about need to approach the the fair and try to work on a access to that site. And then our recreation director has volunteered to spend a lot more time on the pro forma budget so that an actual one can be developed. Our thought from talking to other places, as well as what our goal would be, is that most of the programs would be paid for themselves. So if you sign up for a yoga class or something, your money is gonna cover the instructor so that we're not adding staff members to teach yoga or things like that. um your money is gonna cover the instructor, so that we're not adding staff members to teach yoga or things like that. I also think there's opportunities through partnerships, so say like the library has a teen librarian. One of the things that we heard in the uh focus groups is that people really would like to have something else for teens to do after school or something. So maybe we talk to the library and say, okay, how about, since we're paying eighty-five percent of the money for the library anyway, um what could your teen librarian do for programming here at the community center? And maybe with their current staff, they couldn't do every night, but maybe they could do a couple nights a week. Same thing for People Plus, I think could help provide um activities for elders. I think we'd work something with them. The, I think there's ways to make the program part of this, stretch current resources and through partnerships, so we're not all of a sudden adding a ten person department to the town. Um so I think that's kind of, I think how you could proceed if you chose, and I'll turn it back to your discussion.
Thank you. I've answered actually a lot of my questions. Uh I do think that if we decide to move forward with going to advertise for an RFP, I think it also at the same time says that we want to move forward with that RFP if the numbers come in. Uh that's, and I'm saying that because it's a two hundred thousand dollar spend, we know that automatically, uh maybe more, maybe less, but we're talking around two hundred thousand dollars. If we're gonna spend that amount of money, we have to recognize that we're moving forward with something that is more potentially yes than no, because otherwise we wouldn't spend two hundred thousand dollars. That would be a foolish spend. So for us to go forward with the RFP, I think the expectation would be that when that comes in, that's kind of the outcome that we're looking at to get to the next phase of this building and and making it come to fruition. Along with that, I do want to point out some of the things about the revenues, excuse me, the balancing of the revenues, because as a community center, if we're expressing our tax dollars towards this and all of a sudden I wanna go use the pool to go do laps, but it's been paid for by the hospital to to utilize for an hour. Then another group, maybe the high school swim team wants to use it and they pay for it for an hour. Is there, how much actual community time will be open for open use versus what we're going to take in from revenue? And if we we cross a a road too far where we're taking too much revenue and reducing the amount that the community can use it, and that revenue is still not covering the full amount, I think we need to revisit how that looks. Um just because if we're the community center or we're the community that the center is gonna be in, we should have as much access to it as possible, while also taking in certain revenues to offset that cost, what that balancing point is, is gonna make a big difference in the in the number game. Um and really, the last thing is, I do think when we talk about a capital campaign, we talk about raising everything as much as we can. Uh if we're hiring a capital campaign manager and they wanna charge by the dollar amount that they raise, it's a good ROI. If they raised ten million and it costs us two hundred thousand dollars, well, that's a pretty good ROI. Um and we should, my feeling is that we should be attacking any campaign manager to say i- in the interview process of these different um entities, how much do you think you can raise? Do you think you can raise thirty million? Do you think you can raise ten million? What is, what are the things that you've done in the past? If they say they can raise thirty million and it's gonna cost two hundred thousand, I I say, yes, it's a made up number. I have no idea what the actual numbers are gonna be. But we, our focus should be raising as much as we possibly can. Um that's just gonna gain the buy-in factor for everybody in the community, because it's gonna be less to them on their end, especially if that balancing point of the revenue services, the revenue activities versus community activities kind of overlaps a little bit. It it makes it more justifiable, more justifiable to the people that may not use it as much. So those, those are my my kind of my thoughts, but I do think we need to have a more concrete idea of cost at this point, and I think that's where we're at in this phase. We know roughly what the building is going to cost, roughly, that's gonna fluctuate, timing of that, if it's not built for another two years, we're talking about potentially a ten percent increase on that. So easily, we're, you know, rounding up a thirty million dollar building, either way we look at it. And that's if we get there as soon as possible, and it's not to say that will even take place. So I like the idea of moving forward. I think you guys have done an immense amount of work with the surveys. You guys have taken all of the information and you've done everything that we can ask of you by putting it out there and trying to spread that word as much as possible. And at this point, if you haven't, and this is to the public, if you you haven't raised your voice or made a stance, this is the time, because I think if we move forward and we start doing this, it's not like we vote yes and then you get to complain, right? If your your taxes go up, this is your time. This is your time to really kind of be a community member, step up as a community, and let's start all having conversations, whether that means you want a community center or not. This is the literal time that we all need to come together to have those conversations, so that we can come up with the best product for our town, whether it is a community center or not. That's all I have.
Yeah, Marie.
Yeah, I have two things. Um one, given that the national administration has eliminated all grants and essentially any type of subsidy for revolving loan funds, um I would caution against relying on a earmark for this, given that we just had a massive earmark request at our last meeting. Um so I think whatever decision you guys make going forward, because I won't be making it, um it's gonna be a really hard sell and get two very large earmarks from the senate or the house for that matter um to one community, based on all of the towns of Maine and every organization and every company, every year that tries to get a earmark. So having two in within a decade, that could be quite large. Um I think there's gonna have to be a choice that's made. If you decide to go earmark route, and right now, given what's going on in Washington, that's gonna be probably your best bet. Um or the other options Mark mentioned that are under our control, uh but certainly not, you know, um most of these pertain to uh the sewer extension, like the state revolving loan fund, state drinking fund, those are all federal subsidies, which are gone. So don't count on that, it's gonna be earmark or ten.
Just to add to that, I think you're right. I think this committee or this board would choose which earmark we put forward, because yet two wouldn't work. Um my sense, from what I've heard in the community, is I think Topson as a whole would prefer the money for the community center as opposed to for a water sewer, because we don't own the water sewer district, this separate legal entity.
So I just want to throw that out there, that will be a decision. Um and secondly, uh the money requested for the consultant coming up, um I'm in favor of that, uh for the extra design. I, the only thing that I would firmly come down on is that this only be used for the community center and not for the bike path. The bike path is a separate effort and they are fundraising all by themselves right now. So let them do what they need to do. If we need to partner with them in the future on, let's say grants suddenly magically come back from the federal government, we can do, but it's the end and our and our, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but I don't know the initials.
So what we did for the uh for the sidewalk, then yeah, I mean, I won't be around to complain about it. So yeah, um we can certainly go in that direction, but like this is town money, uh we're not using it to benefit other communities or this singular effort, the bike path that has to be spent on community center. That's all I got.
Marie, anything?
No, I'm gonna pass.
So first of all, thank you for this presentation. A lot of work went into it and it's uh actually, I was very excited, you know, being able to visualize this a lot more than I had. My question is on your numbers. I'm hoping that you were conservative on your revenue and aggressive on your expenses. Uh just because that membership, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, what does that consist of? What do you, what do you, what comes up to that amount?
Sure, when you ask what it consists of, are you saying like the numbers you calculated or like what would you be getting with the membership?
Well, kind of both, actually.
Sure. So so that is um definitely something we can dive deeper into as a committee.
Can you come on?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Just has to be recorded in the minutes, absolutely. Thank you. Um yes, so like Allison mentioned, we started with um, this is just it was based on an AI kind of data gathering and then based on conversations together and with other centers. That is how we made our personal or our adjustments for our town. Um so specific to the memberships, it used about a ten percent um of our town's population um saying that it would purchase the membership and um what we learned is that with the pool, there will be more memberships and you can charge more for the membership, which is why the membership rate and the revenue is larger with the pool than without the pool. Um as far as what is actually provided with the membership, that is something we will definitely need to dive deeper in during the next phase if we do go forward, um because we have seen a variety of ways memberships are designed and what they are offered. For example, there's one, um I believe it's South Portland, where um you can, as long as you're a resident, you can walk in and use the walking track and I think the lobby space um and they use a punch card for the pool or pickleball or things like that, whereas um other ones, you you have to pay to get in the door. And so uh we have not had those specific kinds of conversations as a committee as to how that would be designed. Um so did that help?
It does.
So basically, uh so to answer your question, it's about um it's about ten percent of the population and I believe um it equaled about six hundred, so what would that be like, six uh six hundred fifty dollars for a family membership for a year, I believe that's what it equals to, or with the pool. But it ended up being around fifty dollars a month. Around the numbers there.
And you know, the other community centers we visited, do they have a similar type of structure in place or?
Yes, so that was when I did the research for um non Y and state centers with pools, that was comparable. If you go to a Y, you were paying significantly more. We were paying hundreds of dollars a month. So it would be less than what they were charging. If, and again, these are generic numbers, but yeah.
And since it's, oops, I'm going. Um I'm on a roll, what do I do? Since this is a community center, if there are people who clearly, you know, truly can't afford this, is there a scholarship fund or something for them?
Uh so again, we have not specifically talked about that, but yes, I believe that that's in um I ever, uh the other centers that we looked at all included that. And I believe our committee also supports some of that. So we have not defined what how or what that would look like, but I believe it's an important topic for us to consider.
If I may, I think it was Darmiscotta that did the sliding scale based on, I'm sorry. If I, if I remember correctly, it was Darmiscotta, uh they're a community center, not a Y.
Yeah.
And they did it based on a sliding scale for your income.
Okay.
So for example, we could do something, you know, we have so many different ways that we can approach memberships. Um
Just do it discreetly.
Right, you know, and uh for example, I belong to the Wiscotti Community Center. So when I go, um I like to do my membership, I pay three months at a time, so I don't get that big hit of paying for a year at once, because I don't go that often in the summertime. It's nice out, right? Um they only charge, I think it's like ten dollars more for non-residents. So we really have a lot of flexibility in that respect. Um another thing we've talked about is uh senior citizens and memberships, right? Um punch cards, you can sign up, maybe you don't want to join the community center to use a hole, but you might want a punch card just to use the pool or just to come and take, you know, we keep coming back to yoga classes, but that sort of thing. So there's, there's a ton of different directions that we can go with memberships. Just keeping in mind that we wanna keep it affordable and accessible to our community.
I expect you were gonna ask that question right away, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, oh, I have another question.
You go on.
On the uh utility price, how are you gonna heat this place?
Yeah, so uh that's actually one of the reasons uh to move forward into the next phase of the design. Right now, all we've done is reduce the average of price or how you would condition the spaces. Uh and so, and so I have to get further into exactly what the equipment is that we're supposed to be using. You're constantly looking at trading off whether the initial first cost per system versus the operating cost per system. We'll evaluate that with the with the committee as it goes through that section, that that level of uh the design.
Okay, and one last question. Um as far as holding functions there, what's the, you've envisioned maximum capacity being?
Oh my goodness, uh I mean, you, that oftentimes actually becomes a policy decision more than it is the design decision. So the gymnasium space, for instance, can could hold a large number of people in it if you just think about the floor. The building code will dictate what we have to design it for safely, and it'll say, well, it it's very prescriptive in terms of how many people and how many square feet per person and how how many exits and and how many parking spaces. So all that is very prescriptive. But then it becomes a policy decision in terms of, do you really wanna fill the entire facility all at one time? So that that becomes more of that aspect of it. So uh I haven't done the calculation to even understand what the the difference, but you can imagine if you're filling the multipurpose room downstairs, which can hold probably three hundred easily, and then you've got the gymnasium, which can hold probably over a thousand, that there's the potential that you could have a very large function.
That kitchen would not support that, correct?
That that kitchen would not support those numbers, correct? It's not intended to. We, early on, we evaluated what a larger commercial kitchen would cost and and how much would we get used versus a smaller community center uh kitchen, and it was determined that for the amount of functions that we anticipate, that the smaller community center kitchen was a more appropriate tip.
I think so. I would be really shocked if the functions aren't more than you anticipate. It just seems like it's through, it's fresh, everyone's gonna wanna, you know, have a party or something, so.
We can handle uh parties, but you're right, a a a thousand person party would be another thing. You could certainly support the catering and and
Do a wedding.
There that you would, you would actually, so it's almost one of the things we're built for what you're gonna do ninety percent of the time, and then uh you can always support in another way for that ten percent or so.
Mark, did you mention the heating and cooling facility that we discussed, that it could be an emergency?
Oh, well, yeah, there's there's talk of of, does this become also, we don't wanna use the word shelter, because that then implies a whole increase in even thinking about how we have to design it structurally and everything else. But the idea to have a a backup generator so that you can continue to use this as a uh sometimes a cooling center or resiliency centers, where if something happens, you have the ability uh to um to be able to carry on operationally there. So it can become a location, and should we have uh a period of of extended power outage or something like that, so. Is that what I
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good question.
Good question.
And thanks very much, that was all I had.
I had a follow-up today. You gave me a thought and I just wanted to follow up on it. Have you guys, as a committee, had the conversation or debate in relation to memberships versus taxpayers? I'm just imagining someone saying, I pay a lot of taxes to have that community center and I still have to pay to go use it. Have you guys had that conversation? What does that look like when determining the the price of the the membership for those users? Because frankly, I would, I would anticipate that question.
I think I'll take an initial step at it. Yes, we've had the conversation and we've had it in comparison with what we found with other community centers. Um there's a lot of community centers that have a different pricing scale for resident versus non-resident. And I think that's where we take that into consideration when we're thinking about what this membership might look like. Um so yes, we've had it. We have an iron doubt exactly what that looks like, but that would definitely be part of the conversations we would iron out.
So the taxes pay for the building and then the programming pays for, it's paid for for memberships, yeah.
I like the concept of the walking track being free. Um because then people can use it without paying any money, that feature is available. And then you said the open lobby would also be open. So is that where people would grab a coffee if they wanted to?
Yeah, we've talked about that. We've talked about, you know, if we have that small community kitchen, we can have a snack bar during big events and things of that nature. So having that right off the lobby provides some of that community feel right when you walk in the door. Um we talked about it in comparison to when you walk into the Bath Y. There's that big gathering space, they have snacks there sometimes, like you just wanna walk in and have it feel like a place that you're being welcomed as a community into. Um we talked about the walking track being free, like the Brunswick one, that you can go in and you can use it um and not have to pay for that, but any of the other activities. So again, that's all kind of weighed into what we would have to decide when it comes to the membership.
I just wanna recognize this committee. Um if you noticed, I think you've heard from everyone tonight, and if the ones you didn't hear from, they were whispering things to each other. Um I don't think I've seen a town committee that has functioned as well together. But they all, um they've worked really hard and worked well, and I can't think of, there's not a slacker in the bunch. But they all, um, they've worked really hard and worked well and I can't think of, there's not a slacker in the bunch. So, uh, I think they've done a great job.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I would just like to say that, you know, up functioningly admitting the way we do, that Mark and Pam have a huge amount to do well. The town is very fortunate.
Right, I think we have. Especially we wanna take up the, we have, uh, what, three items we have to vote on?
Uh, actually.
Four.
We have three.
Okay, so relative to the chart, we're gonna, we have some motions we're gonna discuss now.
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Hey, were you ready to?
I'm ready.
Again, read the first one.
I make a motion to charge the community center committee with following tasks to be completed within the next eighteen months. Develop an R F P through schematic design of a community center. Release it with select board approval. Review the responses and make a recommendation to the select board for a consultant. Once a consultant is retained, work with the consultant on the schematic design. Next, to work on fundraising capital campaign for the community center. Interested volunteers may be enlisted to assist. A consultant may be retained with select board approval. Next, to continue to engage the public in the community center process. Next, to balance the desires of the committee and residents while remaining fiscally responsible to the community. Next, to continue to explore partnerships that can help with the revenue generation and cost savings.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion in second.
Could, uh, I add a friendly amendment to that with the process for that?
Friendly one?
Yeah, friendly.
Okay.
A friendly one would be, I guess it would be an additional bullet. Um, that all funding associated with this uh, motion uh, be used solely for the community center. Um, without any additional planning or design work or any extraneous projects.
Can I ask one clarifying question?
Certainly.
Um, we've got a vision that we're trying to do to do more connectivity.
You're gonna do it, weren't you?
No, no, not the rail to rail part, but um, this. Trail that starts out here in front of the building ends at community way.
Mm-hmm.
Eventually, we'd like to get to the mirror, the trail that goes across the Brunswick there on Elm Street. Being a scalding. So the thought is that the driveway. That would serve the community center would have path beside it six feet or something or other. That could get us from community way at least to the community center property.
Sure.
Would you consider that a violation of?
Let me rephrase in my mind. Um, that's uh, all funding associated with this motion be solely used for. Um, activities associated with community center. Uh, and with extension of the walking path that already exists in Topsum to.
The community center property.
Community center property.
You good with that?
You okay with that? It's it's your decision.
I'm good.
Okay, so motion.
So, as a man.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Yeah, motion carries. Second.
Uh, the next is to make a motion to work, uh, to propose direction to the town manager, Mark Waltz, to. Finalize an agreement with the Saginaw Agricultural and Horticultural Society. For a right of way to access the proposed community center site. Um, for those of you guys, the official name was the Fairground.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Um, and lastly, I make a motion on to us to give direction to the Parks and Recreation Director Pam. To begin a pro forma of an actual budget that can explore actual costs and revenue that will be captured running.
Second.
All right, just one question. We should probably just refer to the title. So we're gonna commit Pam here for another ten years.
I did say the Parks and Recreation Director.
Yeah, you said Pam as well, though.
Yeah, and I said Mark.
I know, I was saying, you know, now you can't leave it all.
Ever.
Just well aware of what you're words going on.
Okay, moved in second, all in favor? Okay. Very good.
Good work.
That's one job. Very exciting.
I've been waiting to talk this. It's a long time.
All right, it'd be one more one.
I wanted to keep you, that's all.
All right, we'll get you out of here now. All right.
One more.
Twenty-five eighty-six, consideration, any appropriate action on the appointment of Don Stein to the Board of Assessment Review?
Uh, we interviewed Don Stein this this afternoon and um, he was very much interested. He understands that this is a quasi judicial position and what that means. Um, what happens, we talked through the process about what happens if there is a feel beyond this committee. And so he is interested in the permanent position, not the alternate position. So um, I would like to make a motion to appoint Don Stein to the permanent physician vacancy of the Board of Assessment Review.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor? All right.
I was staying because I wasn't there for the interview.
Very good. All right, most exciting motion of that, yeah.
Motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Favor.
If um, David Mike can come up for one minute, with those of you that are continuing members, I wanna ask a scheduling question. And. We're supposed to do. We're supposed to do an annual trainee assessment, community motivation.